Okay. Welcome, everyone. Commence the August 23, 2022, City Council meeting. As noted on the agenda, we will be starting with a broad hollow water tank and proposed flood mitigation site field trip. So, we will, as far as, Jody, the formalities of that, just-
I'll just take the recorder and record it up there.
So those who are here and online, just pause.
Just hang out, yeah.
Okay, and we will return shortly, so.
Hopefully quickly, so it don't get too bad or something.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Now we're official, and we'll resume our council meeting. So, again, thank you to the Warriors for being here, and we're gonna jump right into, and Carrie will lead this, but we want to recognize Alexis for her amazing accomplishment.
Come forward, Alexis Moore. We will stand right here. Okay. Everyone watching online can see you. Hello. Who don't know, this is Alexis Moore Burton. She has lived here nearly her whole entire life as a neighbor and friend of mine. And, you know, I was her young woman later, I was her track mother, and I just love her to death, and I'm so proud of what she has done. And so, the city of Woodland Hills has a proclamation that they, we would like to give to you, and I'd like to read it. Whereas, Woodland Hills native Alexa War Burton began dancing at the early age of seven at the center stage dance performing dance studio in Orem, Utah. And whereas, at the age of 14, Alexis won the National Latin Ballroom Championship held at Brigham Young University in Provo, Utah. And just three years later, she placed 13th in the world, in the World's Paris Latin Ballroom Championships in Paris, France. And whereas, Latin ballroom dance, which includes cha-cha-cha, samba, rumba, pas de doble, and jive, is technically challenging, fast-paced, and focuses on vibrant energy and personal flair. And whereas, Alexa, Alexis has emerged and excelled as a technical, artistic, and passionate dance performer. And whereas, Alexa has represented our community in Woodland Hills by setting an example of resilience, kindness, compassion, moral character, dedication, and commitment to the arts. And whereas, academically, Alexis excelled and graduated from Santa Maria High School in 2018 with high honors and a GPA of 4.0. Whereas, after graduating, Alexa played the lead role in the US premiere of Strictly Ballroom, the musical, at the Health Center Theater in Sandy, Utah, performed in the Derek Hough Live National Tour in 2019, Derek Hough's No Limit Las Vegas residency in 2021, the national tour of Max and Thou Stripped Down in 2021, and as the female swing in Dancing With The Stars National Tour in 2022. And whereas, when given the opportunity, she was honored to appear on season 17 of Fox's Emmy Award-winning dance competition series, So You Think You Can Dance. Alexis became the first female Latin ballroom dancer to win So You Think You Can Dance championship, and was crowned America's favorite dancer. Then, therefore, it resolved that the city of Woodland Hills recognizes Alexis Moore Burton for her hard work, dedication, and example to the youth of our city, and publicly proclaims our gratitude, respect, and adoration for her success on the national stage of dance. Due to this date, August 23rd, 2022. So we all need to sign this, so let's hash it around and do that.
I'm gonna need a better pen than this one.
Okay, we need a quick pen. Okay, Mayor, we'll all just sign under our name. We don't have a really good spot, but it will work.
She's accomplished, oh, I think she's like 16.
She's 22.
She's turned 22.
Just turned 22, and she's just a really great example in our city. And we want to recognize her parents, Wendy and Doug War. They live on Sky Lake. Wendy is here in the audience with us tonight. Doug, unfortunately, is not refereeing, but he is the announcer at a UVU volleyball game tonight. But, we love it, and if you have not had a chance to watch Alexis' dance, you can go on Hulu or YouTube and click her name, and you can see her winning dance moves. And it's really, really remarkable. You'll just say, oh my gosh.
We'll take it.
Excellent. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. This is so sweet. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Carrie. All right. Moving on to item three, planning commission updated proposals from Chairman Branson.
There are a number of ordinances that we're recommending to the council for your consideration that we've been working on for a while. I think they're, they're in your packet. One has to do with the natural hazard assessment study. Another has to do with fencing, and another has to do with accessory buildings. I want to apologize on the accessory buildings. We probably should have talked to the council before we embarked on, on doing that, to see if it's something that the council was interested in having. What it is, is allowing storage containers to be used as accessory buildings. They have to have certain criteria. I call it putting lipstick on a pig to make them lose their appearance in storage containers. The ordinance has been through our city attorneys. They've okayed it. There are some additional requirements that are required of a person wanting a storage container that we feel protects the city. If things don't get done the way they're supposed to, then there's a, there's a $1,000 bond that a person has to put up in the process. And if things don't get done, then the city will take control of that container and use that bond to get rid of it. So, again, it's in your packet. I won't take the time to, to read it, but it's for your consideration later tonight. So we'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have on that particular ordinance.
Yeah, if, if it wasn't the council that asked for that to be done, where did it, where did it come from?
We have people who started to use storage containers. And so we felt we needed to get ahead of the curve. Right now, there's no prohibition against it.
I thought we had passed a prohibition because of-
We have moratoriums.
We passed a moratorium to give us time to get an ordinance done for that, if that was the option that you all wanted. So, I just bring that up. We don't, and again, this is as much for the future as it is for now. We don't want to get ahead of ourselves if there's, if there's an ordinance that we think needs to be done that might be taken issue, we'll bring it before the council so that we don't spend a lot of time on something that you all are not interested in doing. So, we'll try to put that into effect as we go forward with, with new ordinances and things. It just gives you an opportunity to comment back to us before we embark on, on doing things.
Carrie? I just wanted to maybe reiterate to the public that this is for storage capacity only, not for accessory dwelling units.
Correct.
And some cities have been maybe, you know, thinking about making them ADU, and I don't want to see that going down the path.
Our current ordinances don't allow accessory buildings to be used as living quarters. So it's covered in that umbrella with that.
And would they, they still have a permit for it?
Yes, yeah. So that's what the storage containers. The, the other one has to do with the natural hazard assessment. A number of years ago, the city passed an ordinance that required every new home in the city to have a study done as to whether there was a, there would be mitigation required for a natural hazard where that home's being built. There are a lot of homes that that didn't pertain to. They weren't in a hazard area. But our ordinance required this study nonetheless, which was constant to them. The, the county and the state put together a hazard map to show where the hazards are, natural hazards are in our city. And that is attached to the document that you have there for this particular ordinance. So, the change in this ordinance only requires a study to be done where a home is being built in, in an identified natural hazard area, not every home. So we would use that map as a determination to whether the person will need to have a natural assessment done before building a home or not. So that's, it was just a minor change to that ordinance. Instead of requiring every home to have it, it's just a home that's in a natural hazard area will be required to do that study. So that's the essence of that particular ordinance. The, the third ordinance is on fencing. Again, that's in your packet. Hope you've had an opportunity to read it. The primary criteria there and the change is that a fence can be put along a property line given certain conditions. It can be on the front of, where a bunch of road, we haven't changed that. It's just on the side and rear setbacks where a fence could be on the property line. The purpose for that is, otherwise, we have 10 feet on each side of that property line that is not getting grown. Weeds are gonna grow, grass is gonna grow. If only one property owner does it, it tends to take on a margin that owner's property by five feet if the other property owner doesn't put a fence in. So, we already allow this in, in just the R119 zone. We allow fence along the property line. So this, this allows a fence in the rest of the city to be on a property line provided it meets a criteria that, that is listed in the fence ordinance. There's also a change, a minor change that we've made in the development of construction standards related to this, that we've changed the terminology from property line to the right-of-way, the road right-of-way, so that it's clear in our development and construction standards. We don't have people building fences on a property lines that, that potentially, the right-of-way shouldn't impact that anyway, but we changed the wording to right-of-way instead of on the property line. The other thing that we looked at, there was some concern last time we presented this to the council, was this area that, that's called the clear vision area that doesn't allow a fence along the property line in the clear vision area. There's 35 feet, and that was already identified in our development and construction standards. So, we're trying to minimize the changes that we make to ordinance. That was already in place there, and we felt that that would be a good area to keep clear on corner lots that fences wouldn't be built within 35 feet of the intersection along the property line that have to be set back and follow other parts of our fencing ordinance. So that's the essence of those three ordinances that were proposed. Are there any questions that other than those asked already in the chat?
I'm reading the fence one, and it says five feet from a property line, not on the line. What's the, what's the-
Yeah, so the suspenses or hedges taller than 42 inches shall not be located less than 30 feet from a property line abutting a street, and not less than five feet from any other property line. I'm wondering if we've got maybe a, a little version.
Yeah, because I thought we went to the property line except for on those vision, except for the vision spot.
I've got 10-11-8B1E.
This is the way it should read.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Fences or hedges taller than 42 inches shall not be located less than 30 feet from a property line abutting a street right-of-way, but can run along the side or rear property line as long as the fence does not extend forward of the front plane of the residence, defined as a line running along the furthermost part of the residence from one side of the home to the other for the length of the residence. Further, the fence, hedge, or any other man-made construction cannot obstruct a driver's view of oncoming traffic from either side of the intersection, defined as a clear vision area for 35 feet on each side of the intersection. The two legs of the clear vision area triangle on the owner's private property will vary as depicted in the diagram below. I think what happened is there, in the previous paper that we had, there was an example, there was what we're getting rid of, and that got inadvertently merged with the new, or the bottom part. It's gone.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you look at online, you should, it should have been exactly what you were reading. I just checked to make sure.
It's just, it's below the visual it printed over.
Yeah.
Below the visual. I just kind of scratched through it, so.
So.
Scratch that blankie.
On there? I just want to make sure you're looking.
I printed these from the online of what was sent to us, and it's just right.
We, we pointed out that that diagram had to be changed, and that had to be changed this morning. So, setbacks on there, and the mayor should have an updated one in his packet.
Yeah, absolutely.
It shows the 35 feet.
Awesome. Just as long as we're along the same-
And I made sure that it is on the website with that one.
Okay, awesome.
Let me add, the development and construction standards is just a couple of lines. Says, "The unobstructed corner shall mean a triangular, triangular area formed by the street right-of-way lines, not property lines. The street right-of-way lines connect them at points 35 feet from the intersection of the street lines, or in the case of a rounded property corner, from the intersection of the street lines, produced along the sub-tangents of the curve to said point of intersection." If you want to know what that means, ask Tim Nicholson.
Do we have anything in our notices, the state, that needs to be clear of trees or things of that nature? Or is trees fine in that triangle?
It just, it has to be clear. It has to, you have to have sight, line of sight.
Yeah.
If it's a bush or a tree, whatever, it can be there.
Got it. Perfect.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you. Well, I've got the floor here. I know there's interest in changing our trails ordinance, and you'll talk about that tonight, the putting ballards up to limit the size of UTVs using the switchback trail. There's a little bit more to it, and, and we need to have an ordinance to, to control that. My suggestion would be is that the council assigned Parks, Trails, and Recreation to do a draft ordinance that we could look at then and give us an idea of what's being proposed there that we would, planning commission would look at and give it to our attorneys to look at. But I think an ordinance is in order because it's a change of land use if we're going to put ballards there across the, the switchbacks to limit the size of ATVs. ATVs that can go up there. So, I just wanted to share that.
Per our conversation, I've looked to merge the old and the new in, and then Sherry and I will also be working on that again tomorrow, so we'll keep you in the loop.
Thank you. All right. Item four, proposed charter for Community Watch Committee, Council member mouth of it.
Yes, Mayor, I'm Mayor, deputy, I'm proposing you. And Dustin and I have talked, and he has, and he has, he has done Community Watch, New York Watch in other communities, and helped establish the one in Eagle Mountain. I told him of our concerns and that we wanted an additional sentence put onto our original charter because I felt like most of our charter was still okay, just under responsibilities. If you, you should still have that in your, in your email from when we originally sent it last month. The members, we already approved the responsibilities that we put in there. We had four responsibilities, and we're going to add a fifth. And I've asked the deputy to state what that fifth one will be based on his prior work.
And I just got that, so. That's, I want to ask a question like, what are you looking at from your perspective from the city? What it, what do you need from local law enforcement?
We were just wondering with regards to you and, and that, as we discussed the other day, just making sure that Community Watch recognizes where their boundaries are and what their role is because we're not asking for militia, we're asking for a partnership with law enforcement in, in the capacity that you feel best helps you.
I would encourage the committee that's put together as they continually bring on new residents of the, of the community to be a part of it, is to remember that they are the eyes and ears that when we're not around, but to also not be the person that wants to engage in situations. If they see something suspicious, they're the ones calling it in. They give us the best information they can, license plate numbers, description of the person, but-
Where are they calling?
They can, so it depends on the situation. If they think it's an emergency, they dial line one. If they believe it's a non-emergency, like, say there's a car parked at the end of the cul-de-sac and spent it for a while, then they can just call a non-emergency line. And then dispatch will, obviously, dispatch a deputy to respond to their end. But the, the big thing that we've seen with neighborhood watch programs throughout the United States, if you guys remember, a couple of years back, there was one in Florida where a member of that neighborhood watch probably took it a little too far, and someone was shot. That's not what we want.
Yeah.
You guys are the eyes and ears that when we're not in a certain area that can see things, report it, and they let us respond and make contact with people.
Carrie, as I recall, the last time that this was brought up, what we decided to do was form a committee but not approve the charter.
Right.
Because we wanted the committee to kind of do some work on the charter.
The committee has not met with the deputy. They wanted to wait until the charter was approved then to get in and actually write the plan because when we talked to the deputy, that's kind of the way they did it in Eagle Mountain. They have their structure and kind of what we've done with all of our committees. Here's the structure. Now go in and tell us what your, what your plan is. And that's in number, maybe D, that committee is going to contribute and briefings to the city council. And so, they've kind of been waiting to see because what, what I got out of that meeting is you wanted to make sure it was clear from the deputy that there would be no engagement in anything, especially in anything that would be criminal, that they had a place and a purpose involved in, in what they're going to do. And the deputy is going to be meeting with the committee on a regular basis and get that plan in place, the plans that he has done for other cities. But they didn't want to go forward without the charter.
Carrie, can I remind you that if, when it's a committee, we need to have agenda,
Yep.
public notice, posting requirement.
Yes. I've told them all of that, and so they have not yet met because of, because they wanted to make sure everything was in place. And then, they will be meeting regularly with the deputy to put the, their plans in place of what they think, and then they're going to come to the, to the council and give their reports, just like our other committees have done in the past.
And the neighborhood watch programs, so people are clear on, the neighborhood watch program is based on residents. It's not run by the law, the local law enforcement. We are there to answer questions, give suggestions, but it is a community-based program.
Yeah, and I, and again, I apologize that I'm bringing up old stuff, but I think that was my biggest concern with the charter that I saw before was that it just seemed a little lean on what this group was actually going to do. There wasn't a lot of detail there, and, and-
Want me to remind you of some of them?
What I'm hearing you say is that the committee, which we approved so that they could put some meat on the bones, doesn't want to put meat on the bones. They want to just get the charter approved, so-
No, they want meat on the bones. They just didn't feel that they had adequate approval. They don't want to spend a lot of time for us to just say, well, sorry, because sometimes, some of our residents and some of our committees feel that we do that. And so, what the responsibilities we put in there was that they would, they would offer the city strategies for maintaining a self-community. They would research and recommend these strategies to enhance an overall security of the city, including recruiting residents to serve as neighborhood observers which aren't trained with, as a partner with law enforcement, that they would hold public awareness events, offer, and then engage with local law enforcement. They would educate and encourage residents to practice crime prevention techniques and service confident guardians, guardians of the community by observing, reporting suspicious and criminal activity, which would be to either the, the 911 or to the non-emergency, and that the committee would contribute briefings to the city council. So that's what they want to do. They haven't taken the time yet. They wanted to make sure that they were chartered to do so, and then they will be meeting regularly with the deputy to go over some of the plans that he has done in other communities to showcase how that structure and strategy might take place. Because really, the charter is not about the strategies. Those things change over time. I mean, all of our committees are very brief and vague in their charter, and then the meat and bones come on later.
So they're looking for approval on a charter and then approval on a strategy?
Yeah, they'll come to us with the, with the strategies as an approval. Yeah, so that's the recommendation, is to approve that charter knowing from the deputy that there is no engagement in any sort in this, in what the responsibilities are. And then that they will be meeting with him to put together formal strategies that they can bring then to us, because those will change as different situations come into play or as our city grows, or as new roads, or new areas, you know.
Is it possible to add that to the charter?
But what, what would you like to add specifically?
That this-
A strategy document creation?
Well, not so much that. I mean, although that's not a bad idea, but I'm just, again, my biggest concern, especially when it comes to enforcing whatever, is that really, we don't, we as a city, and I, I want in the charter that the city does not condone them engaging at all. Not even to the, not even to the point that they would like yell at somebody who's doing something. What I want them to, I like the eyes and ears. That, I think is a great idea. And that they would call and, and report things. That's beautiful. That's perfect. But I really want there to be a pretty strong boundary there, that that is the extent of your ability. We don't want you even hopping in your car and tailing somebody who used to be in the city. You know what I mean?
Right, right, right. Well, and that's one of the things that we've talked about is-
I know you've talked about, but it needs to be in the charter.
Just let me finish here for a second. So what we have talked about is in their training, because there's specific training that each of them will have with the deputy on how, what this engagement looks like, right? What this eyes and ears looks like. It may be writing down a license plate number and the color of the car. It may be taking a picture of that car. That's, or, or that person that they see at the park that looks suspicious, right? But that's the level of engagement. They don't go face-to-face. And that's part of the training that, that the deputy will be doing. And no one will be on the committee who does not go through the training.
And I was wondering, do we need to, and again, this is a legal question as much as anything. Do we need to have something like that in the charter so that it's very clear what they can and can't do?
We already have citizens going to the park and telling people to buzz off. We have, you know, I, my dear friend that's sitting in the back, I, I had, I literally woke up one morning and was deeply concerned about her now- Uh my dear friend that's sitting in the back, I I had, I literally woke up one morning and was deeply concerned about her now that she's a widow and. In her home alone and I called her and told her, please do not confront people on your circle anymore, I I'm worried about you. So we already have citizens doing all of that, so if we can have these citizens that are interested in this and they get formal training. And they know what's safe and what's not safe to do, in my eyes, that is a thousand times better. Than what we have going on right now because I have the other lunts messaging me all the time. Because of the activity at the park and then they don't know what to do and they don't feel like, you know, the sheriff isn't always here, right? He can't be, he has lots of places he has to be and so I'm just interjecting my personal thing that we already have citizens doing this on their own. So it would be better if we were organized and we were trained, that's my opinion.
Well, I'm not speaking as the city attorney, wanna make that clear, but do we have any legal disclaimers on any of our chairs for any of our committees?
No.
Well, but this one's a little, this one's a little bit.
I I recognize that.
And and again, I I hear what you're saying and I actually very strongly agree with you, so I do like the training aspect. Uh and again, I'm just saying because this is dealing with. Well, people and possible confrontations. It it's like this, there's this edge of slippery slope-ness and I'm just wondering. Once it becomes an official city charter in one way or another, if we vote on it. Then I just wanna make sure that we're as a city, that we have the right language in there so that we're we're clear that, okay. Yes, we want you to organize, we want you to be a committee, we want you to do all this, but here's what we don't want you to do and and. It's part of the charter, that's it, that's my only concern.
So I can show you, I'll I'll uh, okay, Carrie, we'll we'll look at some stuff, but. In the past, the other cities I've worked with was a neighborhood neighborhood watch program, they actually have to sign a document. And they have to go through a thorough background check.
Uh huh.
Um not saying the background check stops everybody, but we do check them, make sure that they're not, you know. Not wanted and things like that.
So is that what we're really doing is just establishing a.
See, yeah.
Well, what I mean by that is, are we establishing the neighborhood watch program?
Not officially, then what's based on the national, if so, so the city of Woodland Hills of uh about in the late. Nineties, early two thousands, we had a neighborhood watch program. That was very effective and e- even before that, it was just, we were small enough that we had neighborhood watch because everyone knew everybody. Everybody knew if somebody came to your house, they were calling you right away to say, are you expecting somebody, right? Because we were a small enough town, as it grew up, the surge in the nineties, um we we formed a neighborhood watch committee. And everyone, then we had quite a large um, a large group of people, we didn't at that time have charters for our committees in the city. Right, but we focused on the neighborhood watch program that is the national program, now there's some things on there. That are very good and can help us, but we wanted the flexibility of being able to choose and add some other things to. To what we do and what what is needed in our local community and that's where where um the deputy has in other communities been able to take that program. And tailor it to the community where they are and him seeing the the local needs as well as the residents who live here, seeing what their fears are. And then as the council has to approve that, so all of the the, so we put in there that they have to have the training and it has to be connected with law enforcement. And everything they do, if they form something, has to be brought before the council for approval. So if they say we want to do this, this and this, right, and I mean, the fire department doesn't come to us and say we're we we need approval to have the safety expo, they just do it. And I assume something like that, if they were going to be doing a crime prevention type fair, they would just be able to say, we would like to do it on this day. And and form it themselves, but if there were certain strategies that they said, oh, we wanna partner with. The fire department on the night of fireworks dangers, then it gives added coverage to eyes and ears to be out in the community. There may be other opportunities that come because we do have a lot of things that residents call us about about the park. Or those cul-de-sacs, especially those off so.
Just gonna say, do you know what goes on with that cul-de-sac?
No.
The residents have cameras, they have spotlights and they go up with flashlights and tap on people and it goes right down, that's scary.
And and so and so this is a committee that we might be able to utilize that gives those residents who are tired. The ones who have been calling us for the for quite a while now and saying. We're tired of having to be up in the middle of the night, wondering who's that are back door and it's some kids that are just walking through or they're parked on our cul-de-sac. It's not necessarily something that the deputy comes right to because it's not necessarily a criminal activity, I mean. We can, our streets are public streets, but it may be, it's that in-between where it's a a law enforcement activity and just a reminder that, you know, sit along. And it's a benefit to our community knowing that there are additional eyes and ears out there. And it also helps law enforcement to know that there's citizen engagement with them, their eyes and ears. Knowing, trained on what to actually go for, right, we're looking for, are there, is there footprints, is there a car truck, is there a. A picture of the park, is there a picture of the license plate, all of those things add up to evidence for for the deputy then to go forward in in. Looking at what the situation may be.
And I'd be more than happy to have that committee come on Rylons with me, especially at night, so they can kind of see from a law enforcement. Point of view of what we do and then I'd also encourage all of you to set a set a time with me and.
Yeah, just bring Jack, we'll figure it out.
Bring Jack back and I'll go with him.
They're all locked it off.
So I I really think the eyes and ears are super important for the for the city, but again, it's getting the right person in in there. Someone that's not gonna go and try to stir the pot or cause problems or agitate people, that's not what we want.
Right.
Get the best information you can and um let's see where we're going with that.
We have a good committee that we did approve, the committee last time and they're anxious to get started working with the deputy, they don't want to start anything. On their own, they want to say, okay, we're willing to step up and be the eyes and ears, but we do want to be trained. And we want to make sure that we're going in the right direction, they do not um anticipate, they never anticipated this. Uh engagement of any sort with people, that was never the intent and that's why I asked Aaron Gilbert to be the chair. Is because his personality is not confrontational, there are certain people in the city that we we would know not to ask to be the chair because. They're a little bit more agitated and Aaron is not that way and I trust that he will lead this committee in a in a way that will be beneficial to all of us.
And one thing, uh so when I was working with it with the city of Eagle Mountain, um. We started like every other month, there would be a uh neighborhood watching meeting. And there would be a training involved in that and anybody from the community is more than welcome to come for that training. And most of them were pretty beneficial, just not just for the world, those on the committee, but uh for those in the community.
And every step that I mentioned it to, they're super excited for it, super excited.
Yeah, I felt, I I get a lot of texts from people who are worried, is this something I should call the deputy from? So when I tell them that we formed this committee to help our residents, they are. Excited to either serve on the committee or at least have a report of, oh, here's our strategy because they. They might not wanna serve on the committee, but if they know what the overall goal is, they can all participate in one way or another.
Right.
So.
Uh Sherri, you have your hand up, I didn't cut you off, please.
I'll be really, as part of this education, um I think it would be helpful that those who are on the committee are very familiar with our ordinances. So they do know what to call about and will they be giving the city council a report? Like I think you get from a deputy that says, this was a ten thirty at night, this is a misdemeanor, it's disturbing a piece, it's. To give you information, I'm not quite sure how the sheriff's contract works. That's why when he's here, if you see things that are mainly happening at nighttime. Do we ask him, do we have the ability in his contract to say, we need you to be here certain hours? Rather than when he's just showing up because my concern as a citizen is, I call about things that I know. It's in violation of the ordinance, no offense to you deputy, but you get here forty-five minutes later and the people are gone. I give license plate numbers, I give photographs, I give descriptions, nothing else, that's my.
So with the with the sheriff's office and myself being over the the small contract cities that um. You can call and say, hey, can we on the weekends have some extra patrol, especially later in the evenings and stuff like that, like when we have the fireworks. You know, they let me know their times and I came out with them, so I'm I'm pretty open to that, my schedule is very flexible. And that's for the purpose of adjusting.
Of course, Janet's getting on a regular basis.
And I think too, if this committee, as they meet and are trained, they'll start noticing the trends. And that's when they can coordinate with the deputy, we noticed at this time in these locations, there seems to be more activity. And I think that's the kind of communication we're talking about being eyes and ears, is recognizing, okay, is it the middle of the night, is it early morning? A lot of that kind sometimes happens right before you wake up and so there's different times of day and different locations in our city that we might be able to find if there's an increased activity.
And I think that there's some disruption even just, I mean, maybe there's not an immediate response by law enforcement, but just the fact that it's disrupted, I think invaluable.
Uh huh.
And that information is is passed down and it helps us understand.
One of those things that monitor our speed, you guys know when speeding occurs in the city, because the sheriff has to be here during those hours.
So can I bring that up right now?
Well.
I'll bring that up when it's my moment.
Okay, yeah, if so, does it have any other?
Yeah, so I'm proposing that we accept that, we can add that the uh as a E on there, the committee shall be the eyes and ears. Um of the community to report to law enforcement.
Okay, thank you and thank you, deputy, you're welcome, all right, so we'll move on to item five, unless there were any questions, I didn't see. Okay, uh proposal to conduct residential fire assessments to evaluate and identify firehouse, fire damage.
Yes, this will be a lot easier, right, here, all right, so, let me give you a little bit of background. The chief and I were invited to Colorado to meet with other cities that deal with what we deal with, this is living in the woods. Uh firefighters, as we all, fires in the in the US, as we all know, burn more viciously, more ferociously than than ever. Due to drought and all these other excuses we have, but fires are different and so. With all of that background of what we all know about fire and how how it burns quicker, hotter, longer, faster. We 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 met with these other city leaders in the fire groups across the country and. And they suggested and they in their cities do what we would like to start. And and what it is and and I I want everyone to know right off, first of all, that. This is not a judgmental thing that we're going to do, we're not doing this to to say shame on so-and-so and shame on so-and-so. Totally opposite, we're doing this as a favor to our citizens, to let them know and to be aware for their benefit. What we think of their property uh as as it stands for wildfire. So what I'd like you to do is this is the, this is the actual inspection.
Like a red tag, I already.
And this is, this is what you're going, and we're mailing these to every resident, I thought I read that in our.
No, well, what we're going to do is there are six things here that an inspector will drive by a property. Without trespassing, it is not, we're not going to go on any properties. But from the curd side, we're gonna go up to each property in our city, all of them and fill this out. So we're gonna train our firefighters to to do this if we can exactly the same, so that we can get a fair assessment of each property. And each of these items will be marked, it looks okay, or it needs improvement. And then we'll put the inspector's name and phone number at the top of here so that the homeowner. After this is filled out, notice it's numbered and we're going to keep track of of these forms. And the ones the inspector uses is a two-part, so they'll write on one and it'll carve a copy onto a a a copy that we can keep at the city. The reason we wanna keep a copy is we wanna take some statistics and measure our success of this program in in subsequent assessments as we go forward. So they they also have the fire chief's number at the bottom, um. We will fill all these out and we'll drop them in the mail, so this first copy will go to go in the mail and and let the citizens know of. How their property stands up in in the event of a fire and these are pretty simple things that that people can do. And 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 we're really, we're doing this as just to assist citizens and uh and and let them know that. Hey, we're here if you want more information and and we believe that your property has this grade right now and so. Just between you and us, that's that's what we want you to to know and think about and see if you can improve, um. There will be no follow-up unless they contact us, so it's this first year, we don't want to cause any enemies, we want to make it a favorable experience. And if we do it right, the citizens will know we're trying to help, not be judgmental. Okay, so that's that's what we'll do, but before that, we are begging Carrie to put this in the newsletter. So that they have a chance before we inspect as to what we're gonna do. And uh this is a, and I have extra forms of these that everyone in the audience wants one.
Um one of the things that I know, um you know, this is really an exciting thing, right, to be able to go, but. Because they come from the city, they are public documents, Doral.
They they what?
These will become public documents, they will, they will be grammar.
They can be. And they can be.
So I think sometimes that might be something that residents, we. You can't grammar there, even though a a document will come through like a site plan or something, we don't let that out, but. These kinds of things and would we adversely affect someone because.
We think, we we've thought about this and we may attempt, and I think it's fair to redact the address if we if we regret it, but.
I don't know.
But um but.
You can't redact the address, you can only redact the name.
We are putting names on it, it's just address on the form, so.
Hey, Doral, how about you just keep a copy of it, then there's nothing to grammar.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't keep a copy of it in the city, just let the residents keep it.
Destroy the copies once we get our our measurements, um so we'll.
I don't know, that's that's kind of tricky to say we have a public document that we destroyed on purpose.
Well.
I mean, I don't know, I, but I think there's gonna be some residents who say, don't come to my house, I don't.
We don't need, we don't need this.
It's not that about the safety, it's about grammar.
I'll come back, I'll come back to the Colorado group and ask them how they handle this, every city does this that lives in a, in a system like we do, it's so important.
Okay.
Um. I think it comes down to, you know, we have certain ordinances around fire safety.
And they do it every year and these are ordinance ideas.
They do base, so it's not a, not all.
But it's just idea, who's gonna, who's gonna grammar for what reason, right?
So I actually have the opposite question.
Yeah.
You can't see my property from a curse. Well, so would there be a way for me to approve approve you guys, I I'd like you to come.
We we would love permission, if we get permission from individuals, we'll do all that you ask us to do, nothing more, um.
You have to make permission.
And we, oh, thank you, thank you.
Do you, do you need, do you need uh like proof or anything?
Well, if you wanna write a note to us, that would really help us, but that's what we're, see, this is exactly what we're hoping will happen, is the people will invite. More of a study, we're not gonna see the back of the house to do this, so.
Yeah, I can, I can share, we've done this before.
We have, and we have.
I think you came to my property.
Just not at this level, we've never done everything, yeah, uh but we're trying to uh to get everyone, even taking lots, we're gonna try and do and get melded out. So so Carrie, if we could get this in the newsletter immediately or whenever the next one goes out, then it'll give people a chance to. Maybe put some of their things in order if they want to.
See, at the end, it says, watch for for, watch your mail for the fire department assessment forms, you are mailing this.
We are, yes.
After, after the statement.
After, after we, but.
Which means it's a city document, which means we need to retain it in the city, which means it may, it can be written off.
And I'm not afraid of the grammars, I I think it's okay, and they're gonna see, they're going to see, they're gonna see the same answers that anyone would see driving by a place.
Yeah.
You know, it's not a, it's. You know, it's not a, it's a fact.
It's being used against them because it's official city document and I think we don't have enforcement on there.
Well, our goal is to get to enforcement, but you know, even Vale, Colorado, they they assess businesses. They get in there and do all of this. And and they're really now starting to enforce because their community depends on it like ours does. So so I believe just bringing awareness to all of our citizens that that there are things we can do that that make our homes and our properties safer.
Would it be any different for grandma if if citizens had to opt in rather than opt out? I mean, would it be considered a grammarable if they if they opted into that knowing that anyone could get this, their results? Um, would that make it different?
Option would be easier because they are aware of it.
But this is an enforcement, I mean, it's not an enforcement.
This is not, this is not optional this time.
This is not. To me, I think there's some potential downsides to it being such a grammar, but I think there are a lot of benefits. I mean, the the risks of it being problematic seem to me to be largely outweighed by the benefits.
I mean, if someone grammas it, I'll take them and their grammar copy and walk to this other property and say, look, what do you see? Is there anything on here that? You know, I mean, we can all do more, but.
We do have residents who do look at their neighbors and it has turned into some lawsuits and that can be a problem for our city.
Well.
And that's what I'm knowing with it.
It's worth, it's worth the risk, I think, to be.
But we can't be afraid of, it can either, because of, what family.
Um, if you're doing.
So as soon as, wait.
I think we should give people the option of opt.
Because we're talking about it here.
To me, that's interesting, good.
We're, I think it would be good to talk to our attorneys about it. Because now we have, we have city people going around and looking at the lots and seeing where there's problems. But the city has no intention of doing anything about unless they're asked to.
Right.
And where, where does that put the city liability wise?
Well, you know, no other city in our nation has had a problem with doing this attorney wise.
Well.
It's it's done everywhere, that, you know.
We have problems here in the city and the nation.
That's true, that's true, but I promise you.
I think it would be good just to clear there.
Maybe.
With with our attorneys, just to make sure that there aren't any issues that we're not thinking about that could have an adverse impact on doing.
But it is what it is. I mean, it's like they're either compliant or they're not. To me, it's it's, I I don't know. I mean, and that is an enforcement thing, because I mean, just because we can't be a hundred percent compliant in an instant doesn't mean, I mean, this is part of, it's just some migration in that direction, in my opinion.
Like, I want to know. I'm like Dave, I want to know. If I have some shortcomings, I want to know, I want to.
Well, the other thing that I think that this benefit, and I do appreciate what Wayne's saying, and honestly, there like I said, we've we've had, we've had a few citizens that make this double taking question ourselves, but having said that, um, I think the one benefit I do see of this is there's there's probably some things on there that I don't know are ordinances, like I may not know that I need to have so much clearance between grasses and trees and and so forth. So being given that information for me, I I would find very, very useful. But I, man, am I ever suited to the other side.
That attitude you were after, Dave, is just the way you responded. You know, tell me, tell me how I rate. I mean, I want to know too. And and give me a chance to, once I'm aware, then I can choose to to make it better. You have a comment, Brian?
So the way I would look at this is we're doing, we're we're going to train all of us firefighters to do this exact assessment unbiased as possible on every single property. We're not using this in any way to enforce anything at this point. What we're doing is is information. We're giving people information. As this progresses, we're going to then look at enforcement because they are codes. We're doing, they can grammar all they want. If I haven't if I haven't, if the city hasn't fined me for it, how can I complain that they didn't, that they did find somebody else? So we're treating everybody the same blanket, right? Um, and this is the information stage. Next comes the uh maybe, maybe a letter of, you know, you need to, I can't, I forget what the call, so but you need to bring things up to code. And then, you know, however this progresses into a code enforcement, this is now we're treating everybody exactly the same cylinder. I mean, in in my opinion, we have I know it's very difficult for you, Joey, I apologize, so.
Well, and I think for our enforcement officer, because we only have one, and he can't even keep up with the stuff that we know about. And so adding all of this, I I appreciate what we're doing. I'm just talking um just in logistics and realization of if I have been had a violation and I get the thing and I clear it up, but my neighbor then gets a violation and and Craig doesn't get around to him for a whole nother year or two, um, is it, do I start getting a little ruffled, right? Because I said, well, gosh, I hadn't cleaned mine up right away because I was the first on the list and you were the last on the list and it's been two or three years and they didn't enforce the ordinances. So I can see where this could be used against.
I think this is awareness. More than.
Well, it can be, but.
It is aware.
It is informational, but.
There's no enforcement threat here.
It's not enforcement, it's informational, not enforcement.
Right.
I mean, I think, I think I agree with some of the aspects that there's been situations where there's just scares and inaction is going to be worse.
Yeah.
Um, not doing something. And I think this is a great first step because the alternative is people don't and the city burns down.
Mm-hmm.
So I would rather get granted, have my neighbor looking at something and and keeping everybody out. I mean, this is just letting them know, we're not gonna fine them, we're not going to code enforcement or anything like that, but I would rather see some action than no action because the alternative to no action, it burned down, so.
And he's not an old store and hasn't changed.
And I think.
Yeah, and that what Sherry just said is why we were invited to Colorado, because they have watched our chipper program go on for years. Funded by grants and so it was the same grant that got us to Colorado, so. So what we're gonna do. Thank you for your comments. Did you have a comment, Jim?
I think it's beautiful.
Okay. What we're gonna do is we've got twenty-five firefighters volunteers in our city that we're going to try to get each firefighter to look at his own neighborhood. And we will probably want to have a different firefighter to evaluate that firefighter's property. In fact, our chief said he will probably go evaluate each of our individual places. And and that's fine. I I I didn't feel comfortable evaluating my own property or my neighbor's property that I worked on, you know, because it's perfect, you know, if I did it, so. That's not right either.
Yeah, we need somebody else.
So so we've thought about that. So we've got Jones, the mill have have given us maps, these incredible maps. We've marked firefighter homes where they are, numbered them, and we're going to uh get these forms out to them and we want to start ASAP, get it all done this year and. I have a third question.
You said that was gonna be quick.
Easy.
I was wrong.
All right, thank you, Pierre. Okay. Uh, I have six discussion approval for seasons flat C and D on release. Ted, is that you?
Um, I guess I can. Was my name on it?
That's not, it's not. You came on.
I did, who signed the board on?
It says ten on mine.
What, no. I met with uh Robert Nelson. This is Robert Nelson's uh flat C and D. That was Robert Nelson. We went through, we did the final inspection. Um, there were a couple items left on the final inspection. So he took care of those, came back in the office last week, went through the list of those things that were on that list. He's completed all the two items. Um, so I think we made a recommendation in the letter as to how to reduce him. Um, one is he had two curb repairs he still needs to make on flat D. So we recommended we release the majority of his bond, but hold enough money to account for those two curb replacements. Um, and then on flat C, we're still waiting on the record drawings. So the recommendation is that we um approve it, that pending, considering those record drawings. So and that one can be fully released. We have no other issue with that other than just avoiding that record drawings. And he's contacted his engineers and just, it's in the works, that's. We just recommend once, once we get those drawings, we can let Joey know, I was gonna release flat C. But here we already sold it like a thousand dollars, it was. Just to tell you, so he, the two curbs, these, um, there's still some activity going on that could damage the curb. So he didn't want to replace them now and have them damaged again. So we said, that's fine, we'll just hold some money to account for it, tell her, tell it's final and they're fixed.
Okay, thank you. All right, any comments or questions?
In the four seasons development, this is a dumb question maybe because it's about past and maybe there's nothing we can do about it going forward, but was there any discussion around? You know, maybe a park down there within that development or is it just all subdivisions houses? Or anything communal?
No trails, no parks, no green space.
No green space at all, anything?
There was talk.
There was, there was park, hospital parks, because we didn't.
There's some green there, we talked about that.
Development agreement or work next, we couldn't.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, that was, there was a lot of talk of trails and.
Didn't turn the permission.
Because it wasn't, it was an idea from the general plan, but it wasn't in.
It was in the general plan.
It's not in ordinance.
In the, um, not, we didn't have it developed.
Right.
It was four seasons, but it wasn't part of the, um, the final plot.
Gotcha.
It was a preliminary plot.
We tried.
Got, and we pushed back and Robert says, well, we'll make, there's a few things here and there. Yeah, that's a little bit of the source file. Thanks for bringing it up.
That's what I'm here for.
We should move on. All right, item seven, proposal to change banking institution.
Oh, here we go.
Oh, boy, there's nothing.
Nothing like that.
But Chris, you're still muted. If you're there.
I think he's asleep.
Chris fell asleep. I think I better text him. He's walking away from his computer.
He's watching his favorite TV show.
Sorry, I couldn't find my mute button fast enough.
How long?
Jeez.
We're training on this.
You have the floor.
Okay. Sorry, I'm having technical difficulties here. I can't get the agenda up. What was the agenda item?
Uh, it is proposal to change banking institution.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so um uh earlier this year, Rock Canyon Bank, which we've been banking with for about five plus years, was purchased by a bank out of Colorado called Hillcrest Bank. And Hillcrest Bank has banks in several states. Um, this started to raise a little bit of a concern for me because our Rock Canyon Bank, we had a good relationship with the customer services in Utah County. Um, the president of the bank lived in Woodin Hills, so we had a really good tight relationship with this bank. And uh it's just been more successful having a small town bank than it is going to a bigger bank. Um, Hillcrest is gonna move all their customer service into Colorado. We won't be able to even call a local branch here. So I started to do some research to find another local branch or a local bank, came across a couple credit unions haven't been the best option, especially some of the ACH and wiring that we do on the backend. Um, after researching, came across Capital Community Bank. And um they are a local bank. They have about six branches throughout Utah County. They um are, their main branch is in Orem. They do have a branch in Salem down by the um, kind of in the Stokes area. And met with them for about thirty-five minutes the other day on a Zoom. And during the Zoom, the president of the bank, uh Matt Field came on and and met him. He stayed off about twenty minutes. They're really uh wanting to do what they can to get Woodin Hills business. The interesting thing is some of the people that were on the call used to work for Rock Canyon Bank. And they've moved over to Capital Community Bank. And so these are some of the backend people that deal with ACH, the stuff we do with payroll and things like that.
The large portion of them used to be at Far West Bank back in the day, but anyway.
Oh, well, there you go.
You know a lot of them.
So my recommendation would be to have the city start migrating over to Capital Community Bank. I'd like to do this sooner than later before Hillcrest completely takes over and changes all the backend systems and all the payroll systems that we use. Capital Community Bank currently uses the exact same backing in system that Rock Canyon does. So there's not gonna be a learning curve for the employees and hopefully the transition will be smooth.
What's the cost, Chris? Because there's always a cost associated with switching and getting pay uh checks, you know, and all the things. What's the cost?
Yeah, the main, the main thing is gonna be checks and they're about a hundred ninety dollars, four thousand.
Thanks, Chris. All right, anything else?
I am kind of curious, because you're in this world way more than I am. What are your thoughts?
Um, I mean, just who would you be working with mostly? What's the, at the branch?
It'll be Lacy. Oh, no, it'd be in Orem, it'd be Lacy and Emily, Emily Lee and Lacy. I can't pronounce your last name, it starts with an S. And they've already committed that if the city does come over, they will give us their cell phone numbers. So that that's how much customer service they're looking at doing.
Ted, be open. Have you had that experiences?
I know, there's just, there's just uh, there's some of the people, I don't, I don't need anyone in the Salem office that I wasn't involved in.
As a banker or as a person?
As a banker, some of their practices. But I don't know if they're still there.
The other question I have is, okay, this is one. I know there's a lot of different banks. So, you know, is this an opportunity? I have no problem moving away from Rock Canyon. That's not what I'm saying at all. I'm just wondering, are there other options that we haven't considered?
Um, you know, you mentioned Zions before, so I just am curious why you didn't consider.
Zions banking fees were high. They're a big bank. You gotta go through a multiple step just to get to somebody. If you got an ACH problem, you can't get right to a person.
Okay.
That was one of the big things.
Oh, they said their systems are garbage too, at least my association.
Well, he just mentioned before that he liked them on the windy side, so that's why. Lots of times if you're trying to get loans for things, they want you to have deposits there. It's kind of the balance thing, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, my only question would be fees, interest rates, things of that nature. Are we going, are we improving on that front, staying the same?
Yeah, are they competitive? Is Capital Community going to be competitive on like city credit card rates and, you know, just some of those little things that add up?
Yeah, so we won't be moving credit cards as a run to the state of Utah. We won't be housing much more than two hundred thousand dollars with them at any one time. We do most of the money up in the PTIF accounts up at the state of Utah, just because banks don't pay very much. However, um, the president said they want to take a look at our PTIF rates and see if they can match them or beat them. And so that's fine if you can do it, but I haven't seen a bank be able to do that yet. And the transaction fees and stuff are gonna be similar to what we're paying right now.
Okay.
Anything else? Great, thank you, Chris.
Okay.
All right. Item eight, back to Ted, approval of burn and tank sites facilitate avalanche debris flow.
So I guess we had a good discussion of the site. Um, I think if, and I wasn't, I'm not sure what this um, agenda is, i- is it about the hollow burn, the one we're looking at right now, or the long-term project? We talked about inner CS on this agenda item.
Yeah, it's just.
So, um, so this would be um hollow burn. That is the burn that would just be interim project, the workplace right now, to protect some of the homes directly below it. Um, I think that's what we're talking about in the agenda. We talked about it quite extensively up there. It's a balanced design. So there's no import or export of materials. It's all these materials that are there. Facilitate this. The plan is there is a uh the the homeowner was with us, has an engineer that's involved. There was also an engineer that would be doing, um, that that worked on the initial hazard assessment that would be doing testing. Because they're the ones that identified this as a hazard and so they had to sign off on it. We don't necessarily sign off on it, they will. Um, that they have satisfied the condition of the hazard that they identified. We will be monitoring the dirt. We will be monitoring the, the dirt more so that it is, um, something that we can use if the future renovation project happens. So that it's, it meets all that criteria. So we're not redoing work essentially or have stuff where we can't use as part of that project. So the, the pass off will be by another firm as far as they'll be doing compaction testing and stuff like that. We'll make sure that the, the dirt is, is, uh, for our future project. Um, and that's kind of how the progress and then the owner has agreed to take on the construction of it. That will be monitored by the firm will sign on. And specifically, um, I think the CMT actually did the initial assessment and said, this is a hazard. We proposed a hazard mitigation, which is the burn we talked about. They agree to that. Seems satisfactory. So CMT will be the ones that will monitor the compaction and, and the construction, make sure it satisfies. To, to mitigate. That's kind of the approach to how we're gonna proceed with this.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you have any other questions.
Anything? All right. Thank you, Ted. Uh, okay. Item nine. Amendment ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one, be scheduled for misdemeanor violation.
Um, actually Deputy Dustin informed me, we don't need to do this. Um, at higher city council meeting, we adopted, um, a fee schedule for misdemeanor violations. And it was thought the state, in order to enforce those violations, wanted it in a different format, but they're okay with what we did, so.
Oh, good.
Great. Okay. Item ten, back to Deputy Dustin, Utah County Sheriff's Office.
Okay, so a couple of things. Um, one, for the, the stats for the month of, uh, July. There was forty-three, uh, details of law enforcement, uh, dealt with here in the city. Majority of them were animal control problems. Uh, we had a couple of animal complaints and then injured animals there that have been hit and. Um, unfortunately, sometimes people believe that the deer could be saved. And they want animal control to save it and go get it. Just like hills and things like that. Unfortunately, that doesn't. Doesn't happen. Um, and then, um, a couple suspicious, uh, callouts and then a couple of medical callouts. And then extra patrols. We had eighteen extra patrols throughout the city. Um, mainly, and then just some follow-ups and citizen contacts for some of the major things. So nothing like that pops out and says, hey, this is what was going on for the month of, of July. So any questions on those? Okay. Um, the other areas, so. Couple months back, I demonstrated my canine partner, Jack, in a demo and, uh, this was kind of a hard decision for me, but. Um, two weeks ago, I asked to sit down from canine, uh, just due to, I'm trying to give a hundred percent to the canine and to the cities. And I felt like, um, with what I was doing, I wasn't being able to do all that. And so I asked this out from canine to focus more time towards the cities where it's needed. Um, at the same time, they are, the sheriff's administration met together and they also met with some other canine. Uh, handlers that worked with me and trained Jack and they came to conclusion that Jackson needs to be retired. He is a very energetic and very distracted dog.
Did you know we liked Jack more than you?
Yes, I know, I know.
Can we get to do a proclamation for Jack? I would love to.
So, uh, Jack is, um, he's retired and the, the sheriff's office is letting me keep Jack.
That's cool.
And so there's the pluses and the cons of it, but, uh, so my kids are very excited because now he can be played with more often and we can feed him more items. I worry about that. But we did find out that Jack, before he was donated to sheriff's office for the first two years of his life, he was trained by two professional trainers to be a pheasant's burrow dog. So that is probably one of the reasons he is so distracted when he's outside and he, anything that flies, he's after it. Um, and, uh, his grandfather was a three-time world bird champion dog, so.
That's cool.
The sheriff's office said if they know that, they probably would not. And I did a little research. I'm like, man, this dog is like all over the place. So we love Jack. He's just.
We do.
Yeah. So, uh, city ordinances, so as you've known, we have tried working with putting this together and pushing it through the state and getting it approved and everything like that. And we've had some issues where we realized we were communicating with the wrong, um, people. At first it was the Utah County Attorney's Office and then they told us to go to the state. And through that, we've been able to work through, uh, some stuff. I'm happily happy to report that those seven city ordinances that we've talked about have gone through the state. And today I got, uh, the final email that they are approved. Um, I'm hoping tomorrow that, um, we have four that need to go into our system so I can pull it up on our citations. Uh, but we do have three that are in place right now. And today I actually issued a citation under one of those, uh, for an open fire. So, um, that is going through the whole process. It's there, so. No, so the, the open fire was over the weekend. We had, uh, a party that was taking place in the city and they had fired dancers. Or a fired dancer. Um, it was reported, uh, to us. Uh, there is video of it and, and some other witnesses. And through that information, I contacted the people. They, they don't live in the city yet. They are building a house. Very apologetic, everything like that, but, uh.
A fired dancer.
Again. I, I was talking to Craig. Maybe we should have a big sign at all the entrances.
No fired dancer.
And no fired dancers. Cause that is the second fired dancer in two months.
Different people.
Different people. Different companies, so.
No, there's no fire, but there's.
I'm, I'm jumping right off my wish list.
Okay, I'll learn how to do that now. So may, may the word get out that we are one hundred percent enforcing that. It is, uh, maximum fine one thousand dollars. So the judge can have leeway on how much they want to find, but there is a maximum fine of one thousand dollars.
That money goes to the court.
To the state. I don't know how, I don't know how all that works.
It doesn't come to less.
I think there is a portion that goes to state, county and city.
We, we do get a portion.
Oh, there, Chris knows that. All right. So, but that is, it is enforced now and, uh, it is, so if any sheriff deputy comes into the city, you can type in Woodland Hills and it'll show those ordinances and they can click on it and issue a citation. So, so open fires, fireworks and shooting a gun is mandatory court appearance, uh, in the city. And then the other one says parking, snow removal parking, uh, curfew. And help me with the other one. Uh, oh, uh, weapons. So shooting any weapon, archery, things like that that are against the city rules.
Now, even if you're, even if someone gave you permission to hunt on their land, no, you can't.
Yes. All right. Two more items. Speeding, um, that's been a, a topic and I know myself have been talking a little bit about this today. We do have those radars that are up on the speed on the signs. Craig, uh, is the one that gathers that information. Um, I believe the one on Woodland Hills, he can just pull right up to it and it's even blue to the, uh, to his computer. Um, yeah.
Uh-oh.
So. So what is, just so everybody knows, it does not take a picture of your vehicle or license plate or anything like that, but it does track.
Speed limit, TLG, right?
Yeah. Yes, yes. So that, that, those, uh, those radars, um, do track even when they aren't showing the speed. Uh, that is something that, uh, we track, we could track information with and then kind of determine when those speeders are, just so you guys have information. When myself and Craig have looked over it, the, the biggest times for speeders in the city is usually from seven-thirty in the morning till about nine o'clock. Again, during school. Um, the second is three-thirty to five-thirty. And the busiest time that we saw speeders is Sunday morning. So, um, I do have, I do carry a light arm with me now and that's, it's, it's speed through laser. Um, that is nice because then I can actually, I've had a couple of residents encourage me to sit in their driveways. And I can just roll my windows down and go for either direction instead of being pointed one direction with the midars. So you'll, you'll see me out and about. I might have pulled some city.
We might, yeah.
I've been pulled over before and my eighteen-year-old did get us to get this last week. So, you know, I taught him well.
Here in Woodland Hills?
Well, no, down by the middle school. Down at the bottom.
Yeah, forty miles an hour. So one, one last thing I've, and I've talked to the, the mayor about this. So, um. I think the city, for my time here with the city in the last year, one thing I've really seen from the, the four contract cities I have is how long are you gonna stay? And that's been a big thing. And I, from what I've understood and seen and what I've shared with the sheriff administration is that a sheriff, a sheriff deputy that's assigned to these cities should stay for at least, I, I, I think, three years. Um, unless they test for sergeant and get promoted. Uh, so I tested, I tested for sergeant and I made the top ten pool of that. Which means they could pull me at any time. There's five sergeant opening spots within the next year or sooner.
Have them calling for a reference.
So. So what, what I've done, and I'm just gonna throw it out there and I just, I'm putting it out there so you guys have the information. I don't have a lot on it. But I'm like, what would it take to have a committed sergeant over the contract cities, which would be a benefit for the cities? Because then a sergeant is usually in that position for five or more years. Depending on it. So there'd be more commitment to the cities.
We could lobby the sheriff smith for a sergeant.
So.
Okay.
So I'm just, I'm just throwing out there what the, what the additional cost would be for the city. Cause this additional cost would be forty-five hundred dollars more a year than you're paying now. And that's, that would take you from seventy-five dollars an hour to eighty-three dollars an hour. So I've done some math. I'm trying to figure out how can I stay in the cities? I'd love working with the cities. Um, that's kind of why I gave up the canine position is to be more focused with the cities. So I'm throwing that out there. I can give you more information. I, I want to put something together so you can see the pros and cons of it. That is my spilling. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, public works. Corbin. Well, there is accepting dirt from contractors at flood mitigation site. So we did, uh, as Ted pointed out, we talked about that at, uh, some length. Um, so i- in my opinion, uh, this is, uh, a- at least for now, it's a, it's a relatively binary sort of an issue of, do we want to accept the dirt at this point or not? And it sounded like, based on the discussion that we had at the tanks, there's certainly some that feel that further study and deliberation is, uh, needed, but a- at the same time, if, if the council feels like we could move forward with that based on the information, based on the proposal, uh, that we've been given. Uh, it would be nice to start the ball rolling on that. Yeah.
I think for me, I'd like to see just a little bit more like a written plan and Corbin and I have spoken about it probably in an nauseam, but just, you know, what is the process? What is our procedure for if we do go forward? What would it cost? You know, what would the rates be for into the city? How would we track that? What would the administrative needs be to collect said funds? I think there's still a little bit of the, the nitty gritty from a process and procedure standpoint that we don't have access to yet. And I'd like to see that first.
Well, and I, you know, I, I agree with you. And the other piece of that is, you know, Corbin was mentioning that it would be people that are building within the city. And so what would be the process? Again, that, you know, who, who would be monitoring that and how would we make sure that it's not, you know, again, going all the way from the bottom of Woodland Hills up to the top? And it's really somebody that is, you know, it, it's going to help our roads, not hurt them. I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Would it be part, do you think would be part of the initial application of, of building to say, we would like to put a submission in to, to haul our dirt up there?
From, from what we've talked about in Corbin, you can correct me if I misstate anything here. But we've, we've talked about many trail cam with placards and windows that capture license plates. And then we can see the placard and then we can count, you know, as it goes up, boom, one, two, three, four. And that way we'll have that idea. Um, and then if we have somebody that doesn't have a placard, we have their license plate. And then we can issue a fine for illegal dumping or something along those.
But is that the primary concern? I mean, the primary concern that we need a policy in place or is, are there concerns about whether we're gonna end up with a bunch of dirt up there and not see this flood mitigation project through to completion? I mean, you know, that, so if it's a matter of, of procedure, I think that's a pretty easy fix.
I would say procedure of time of day that they're going up, what size of loads there is, how many loads? Are we conducting the revenue? Those types of things that are put into place so that we would recognize, um, what is the impact to the road? Well, this particular developer has just put up five hundred truck loads. This other one only put up a hundred. So where is that? And is there additional fees based on the amount that they estimate they'll be bringing up? I mean.
I think.
A sliding scale.
To your point, I think there's definitely a process stuff. That's what y'all are talking about.
Well, this actually sounds more like impact analyses too.
Well, I think they're both.
And, but I think, again, I think that's the reason why I, I feel strongly about not mixing these ideas, even though they could be mixed. I think we need to separate them. The one is the, the, what I'm gonna call the tulip burn. I think that's idea number one. The other idea is the, just, um, trying to save our roads by having the dirt all up rather than down.
Yeah, the tulip burn in my mind is totally separate from this.
I think there's three things actually.
And then the third thing is the, the, uh, mitigation, further mitigation. And I think there's, there, though, all three of those can be completely separate. They don't need to be tied together at all. And I would personally, I would like them not to be, because I think we'll make better decisions if we don't. If we don't try and string all of this together.
Well, I think in, in, in my opinion, uh, the Todd's, uh, burn is irrespective of the green dirt. To me, the dirt is only further to the flood mitigation.
Fair enough. And actually, I'd like to make sure that any proposal about bringing the dirt up would not delay or impact the tulip burn.
Yeah, no, I, I am in, we agree with you.
And if it's really, we were talking about this prior is, is it either for either of those two projects? Or does it stand alone as this is a revenue, um, resource for the city as a separate project overall?
Should I think if that's the case, we'd probably say no.
Yeah.
Cause we don't have a big.
It's not worth it.
Scar of dirt up there just to, to generate revenue. If we don't have a purpose for the dirt, I don't see a purpose for bringing the dirt up. Except there is that safety element on the roads. Getting those semis off of Woodland Hills Drive is valuable. So now it's just a weight analysis.
But there's also the impact on the people that live in that circle and they're all my friends. So, my neighbors and my, you know, that's, that's, that's my concern. I think it's a fantastic idea, but I'm concerned about the people that live on that road and all those trucks are gonna be going up and down.
And that creates other hazards. I mean, it might not be a truck losing its brakes, but it does, I mean, so to me, I think we've got to approach that as a wash. I, in my mind, I don't see the trucks going down and the trucks going up as particularly advantageous. I know you might disagree and Corbin might disagree, but to me, I just think that if we're gonna finish that project, we're gonna need the dirt anyway. Why not make some money out of it? And if it's in the reasonably foreseeable future, you know, not twenty years from now, so.
I don't know. Yeah, I agree with you. If it, if the project, if the mitigation project does not happen, the dirt up there is not advantageous.
Yeah, in fact, it's disadvantageous.
Correct. If the mitigation effort is gonna be done, then we should capitalize as much as possible. We can generate more revenue, pull dump trucks off of our most. We can generate more revenue, pull dump trucks off of our most expensive road, which is Woodland Hills Drive. Um, there's the the safety factor, which is more emotional negotiation. And then four, it helps us expedite the completion of mitigation project. Because if the federal government, correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, but as far as I understand, if they say now it's our project. They'll just start trucking it up and all of those trucks that we're not gonna capitalize on are still gonna go up that road and there's nothing we can do about it at that point, so. At least we can capitalize on some of the dirt we get up there before, so there is a little bit of a delicate timing effect. And for me, the only one that has to happen is the burn we're not naming after Tulars.
I like the Broad Hollow burn.
Wow.
Broad Hollow burn.
That's what we even on.
I'm just saying that, you know, you don't feel like it's your fault or.
However, can we call it the Tular Hill, the Ski Hill or the Sweating Hill?
If you don't like this, call the Tulars.
What signage for that?
So everyone's in support, I'm gathering, of the flood mitigation project proceeding to phase two, right? I mean, so, okay, some are, some aren't. Cause to me, if 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 we're not, well, by we and you, cause I'm just. Here, yeah, read off this agenda, if 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 there's not consensus on that, then. I think that, you know, that's problematic and certainly would need to be considered fully before we start taking truckloads of dirt.
I mean, I mean, that's that's really, so, thank you for phrasing it that way, cause I I do think. Um, again, now that I can in my mind tease these apart, it begs the question, if we have the Broad Hollow burn. And we all acknowledge privately, quietly, that this really isn't about sledding, it's really about avalanche. Then why do we need the mitigation?
Well, I think it's still partially also for flood and for debris flow. I think all three, all three are are needed and important. Avalanche is just a big extra bonus.
But would the Broad Hollow burn, would that address all avalanche concerns or there? It seems like there are additional avalanches.
It's not designed for it at all.
The deep pit, that used to be their help to of the new one, that's even bigger would be worth it.
No.
I mean, what we're doing for Tulars is gonna help with avalanche.
So.
But there's still further mitigation that can be.
Right, so I mean, kind of like we talked about that they're over there, we're kind of kicking out the weight for us. Homes are ready, I mean, remember, there's still people that have property and want to build homes directly below this spot. And there are other homes that have been impacted by the avalanches historically, so, I mean, the future project. Is is a benefit to to other properties and homes as well in the city for saving protection, but. I mean, that's. I try to stay impartial because I want this to be a community project, but those are some of the benefits of, I mean, the cons are. Construction of this nature is never fun, it's never easy, I've been doing this a long time, I've never had anyone who might need to say thank you for constructing this. Bunches of structural classes, we really enjoy it. When it's done, there's some appreciation of what's been done, but through the process, I've never had anyone thank you for. Being able to go through that construction, right, so they're never easy. Especially when you're local, I I can't tell you how many three, three o'clock when we're on phone calls, I got when this project was gonna happen, screaming. And.
Me too.
City council folks, they're not, but anyway. It was, it was interesting to say the least, so I am I'm gonna stay impartial, but those are the benefits of. Of the project or cons with it, but.
And then the other one is, could the federal government just put the brakes on it and then all we've got is a big pile of dirt up there?
And that's true, there's any point where they can say, we just don't have the money right now, I will say. If there's any time the federal government's giving out money, it's right now, they just, FEMA just got funded through a program called BRIC program. They just owe us two billion dollars funding this year for that program, which is unprecedented, it's it's double what they have before, so. Federal government's really funding this kind of stuff right now.
I mean, we told I R S A gets up there, they're working on it.
I'm just saying the federal government's funding it.
Ukraine and.
That's. Okay, fortunately, it's also a situation, because that's.
Yeah, so, I mean, does that, I, does that a?
I mean, we do recognize that if that the funding would come because of the of post fire mitigation, we recognize that. We may not have a lot of flooding or or debris flow, but we may, we were on watch on Saturday. I, we were in constant watch on Saturday because of the amount and the kind of rain and the duration and the heat. All at the same time, that's the perfect storm are these summer monsoons. We could still potentially, we're still in that risk zone for that, but. Like what we're talking about, what Ted is saying is that although we're not funded for avalanche, that really is historically our threat. And an avalanche would not just be diverted by a a a little burn. And avalanche has a lot of power and it has a lot of guts to it and the little, the little what we call basin we had before. Wouldn't even begin to feel any any snow. And so this as a secondary project would then allow the homeowners on the bottom side of that. To be able to build, cause right now they are in a hazard zone and they would have to come up with their own mitigation. The Tulars, we have, we have had an agreement now to be able to work on this together for those. What what about all of those property owners may say the same thing. Um, if we can somehow be using dollars that are not our. Direct taxpayer dollars to our city to fund that mitigation project, it only benefits all of the homeowners in that complete area.
Yeah, you know me, again, it for me, it goes back to. What's, how much has changed and how much is just? It's a, it's a steep mountain, you're living next to a mountain. Um, you know, I I understood the previous mitigation effort. There was a lot more that got burned there, so that was directly impacted by the fire. This next one, I'm sitting there going.
But what we're just, what we're helping the Tulars with is not necessarily for flood control, it's more for an avalanche. Type of of a situation, building this burn. Well, all of the other property owners who are in that same area could come to us and say, hey, you you have. You know, you were allowing this to happen on this property, what, how come you aren't caring about us? And so I think that any mitigation we can do, um, despite what it may be funded for, if it has a a secondary. Um, positive impact to our community. It seems like that would be something we should seriously consider because it is. Um, based on being a watershed option, protects our water tanks. We know that we have had avalanches around the water tanks, we've had avalanches almost consistently every year, they don't all come down into our city. But we do have an avalanche pretty consistently every year. Um, somewhere in one of those canyons and so, or just, you know, that's just happens and so it's not a. It's not a matter of like the fires, we can say they may or may not, we can almost guarantee avalanches, we don't know how far down they come, but if they do. How do we use our, um, the mitigation that's already in place to capture that as a hazard? For the homes that are down that area and our water tanks.
So I would just say, let's, let's do this, let's. Give it some further consideration as to where everyone stands on that flood mitigation project. And if we're all on board, I think that we should seriously consider taking that dirt and and then, uh. You know, take a vote on that, so why don't, I mean, I I think that we probably need to think further on this, so. Let's, let's table it as far as the decision goes, but but that would be the direction I would encourage us to go, is to, if we're, if we're. In favor of the mitigation project proceeding as proposed and is kind of wheels are in motion, then I think that we really should take that dirt, but obviously. Okay. All right, uh, council member, Public Works, Rose.
So our last Public Works meeting, we met and discussed the potential possibility from an investigative study. Um, for garbage pickup, making garbage in house. Um, we went through that process, there was a number of questions that we went through during that, I've then gone and created a presentation. Um, and given the answers that Corbett and I have come up with over the years and then I've just delivered that to the rest of the committee. Um, and so they're now taking it from there, so we're working on that and then when we have more information, we'll, we'll come back and visit here.
Okay, so you think you have a southern running garbage system, how much time do we have left on that contract, about ten months?
We do, we do, no, we've got a lot left, so. So we're, we're working down, we've got a few things, we've got a little just to figure out. Worst case scenario is we opt not to do it and just renew for, you know, as normal, so.
Well, thank you for doing that, I think that's a very promising prospect. All right, uh, council member, Guinness, Public Safety.
Yeah, thank you, uh, I sent the council an email of all of the calls we've had in the last quarter, I think you need to know what your department's doing for you. As far as fire calls and medical calls, in May, we had seven, in June, we had seven, in July, we had fourteen, so. Uh, and these numbers are are huge for us. Twenty eight calls in three months is like what we would have in a year, you know, just five years ago, so.
I don't think that question was that because, so the deputy gives me his stats for law enforcement, so. Should we, in our communications, in in our newsletter, have them as two separate or should we combine it to say law enforcement and public safety? This is what we're doing locally, our 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 fire department and this is what our law enforcement has done, or do you want them as two separate?
I I would vote separate, just to keep our fire and medical calls separate from police calls. I think.
But some of his do stay medical, so that's why I am asking.
We brought two different case numbers.
Okay.
And we were paged differently, um, it's just way different.
Okay, we'll put both on the map then.
Now, since July, our calls haven't decreased. You know, sometimes you don't know what's going on around the city, you might occasionally hear a siren or you see smoke, but. We've had some close calls this last month, we had a car fire over on Summit Creek that. It was a miracle, I think those guys got there so fast and got that thing full of foam and stopped it before it got in the brush, that was incredibly well done. There was another brush fire down here on eleven two hundred that really took off. And the wind was blowing fifty mile an hour that way, so I was going to the fire pretty happy because it was blown away from our city. But but the crews got there, they put that brush fire out. Along with all of this, you know, we did parades at Salem, which was extremely fun, I have never met so many citizens along the side of a parade that wanted to be squirted and. Were such good citizens and and the thing that shocked me is strangers would come up to me and say, hey, we've heard a lot about the Woodland Hills Fire Department, you guys are great, you know. This was from strangers, that meant a lot to to us to hear that. And we patrolled, as Deputy Dustin said, and and he attended multiple patrol nights with us and we really appreciated that. It gave the chief time and an opportunity to take him to a safe zone, a new kind of a new safe zone people are unaware of over in Summit Creek. And he needs to know those kinds of choices that we have during a fire to get people in a safe area, so. Anytime he spends with us, we we appreciate that. So it's never ending and ever demanding and our volunteers just keep showing up for training on top of all of this, so. I appreciate him a lot, sixteen of those calls were off of work hours, you know, not normal late to five stuff, you know, it's it's always late night or early morning or middle of the night, so. When the pages go off, they show up, I just hope they keep doing that, yeah. Chief right now is replacing a pump in one of our brush trucks that that needs to be changed for a lot of reasons and so he's. He would have been here tonight, he's off doing that and. Four of us helped him this afternoon to get a jumpstart on it. He's that incredible chief and and the department follows in his footsteps. And then, so, it's doing well.
Great, thank you, thanks for that excellent report. All right, uh. Council member one, city events and volunteers, parks, trails and recreation.
So the city events and volunteers, it's just getting really busy for Woodland Hills Days. September ninth and tenth, mark your calendars, we have signs went up over the weekend, so we've got those, we've got everybody in place. We had Robert Nelson and S E S D and then also Summit Creek are all giving donations to help. Cover some of the costs, so that's awesome, we got to go do a little photo op with S E S D, that was fun. Um, they're nice, they're nice, they they gave us a little bit more than they did the year before, so. That was, that was a good thing, um, so yeah, my committee's good, my chairs are a little busy, but we just keep proud of them a lot. We'll get them, we'll get them done, um, and then parks, trails and recreation, um. We did do a beautification project on Saturday and it was for a scout, a mom had requested her scout needed a merit badge. For conservation and asked if we could help, so we had the beautification committee do that and so we went out Saturday morning and trimmed and pulled weeds and. Cleaned up and, um, we got a lot, like, we got it all done and the roundabout in in about two and a half hours, so we did. We did good, we made a huge pile for the city to have to come clean up, so. So that was good, um, everybody worked hard and we got ran over, so.
Well, I drove right pa- right past you, I thought about stopping, but then I worried you might ask me to.
To work, I would have. I would have, um, I thought it was really cool because what, cause when we were, we started by the mailbox, so we kind of got that area done and then we moved. We were waiting for the cones and then we moved to the to the roundabout, but people in the city would roll down their windows and kept shouting, thank you. So, um, I think it looks a lot better, it's not done, there's, we wanna plant some more and do some more things in there, I'm not over it, but I'm just, I'm just the slave, I just say, tell me what you want me to do. So I I think it'll be nice. Um, and then when we met with PTR, um, we talked about a lot of things and part of that was. The flagpole issue, the flagpole, there's two trees and the flag hits trees and it tears the flag up. So, um, we temporarily decided we're gonna trim the trees back for now and also, um, a family wanted a bench, it's a beautiful bench, it has. That it's all metal and it has the names engraved in it and it's really nice, like, it's a really expensive thing, really.
Will go in the middle of the roundup?
No, we're talking about the park.
Okay, I was like going, we were talking about the waters bench, I thought we were still doing that one.
No, well, I'm talking about the park, I said PTR met at the park.
Yeah, cause well, cause the flags are also in the roundabout, get stuck on all the flags, on on all the trees, so there's two flags that are being stuck on trees.
Okay.
And a roundabout bench is not a bad idea.
I was just saying, that's weird, no, I I moved on to the park, we probably zoned out on that little park.
Probably.
Uh, but anyway, so yeah, so we are going to trim the trees and then we would like, we talked about moving the pole back, it was a scout project. But just moving it back a little bit, then you could leave the trees and you could leave the pole and it'd be the least disruption other than worrying a little more cement and moving the pole.
Fractional movement.
Yeah, I think so, I would, I would reach out to the family and just kind of let them know, right? Um. And then, just, oh, we talked about the trail, all that maintenance we did, it still looks good and then we're just going to work on, we're still working on data for. Basketball and pickleball, we we had some round numbers, but we wanted to get some specifics so that we can. See if we can get some donations, um, Greg Witt in the city, he has a foundation and if people wanted to donate, he would actually let us donate through his foundation. To get some money to put the pickleball and basketball courts in, so we'd really like to get that going so that maybe by next spring we could actually. Start on it, so. Anyway, that's all we have.
That'd be great, thank you, okay. Um, and council member, communications.
Mm-hmm, over the summer, we only did a newsletter once a month, so. Uh, we're hoping that we can have that more regularly now that it's, you know, summer's over, uh, we've been putting out notices for people to join the committee and. Haven't gotten a big response, but I might try at Woodland Hills Day to move a few more people in. And for all of you, if we can get it done every week, I would like the, um. Deadline to be every Friday at five, so that we have our good time to format. Any information that you would like to be in the newsletter and it would go in the next one, whether it's on that, we're trying to get them out on Tuesday or Wednesday morning.
Um, Deputy knows what he needs to provide and then, uh, well, you're adding some new things to it, so that will be great. Um, but again, if there's anything that you ever. Want in the newsletter or if you want it posted on the Facebook page, just send it to me. I've been posting quite a few things for Janet and we get a good response. Uh, with the pictures and other information, so.
Just on that note, if you guys have anything that, um, I think it's really important, anything that for community unity, um, you know, we had.
Good.
The dance, anything that just that you see or anything that, I just think it's good to kind of get that out there right now.
Yeah, so all those positives, you know, I, I think it really adds to, um. A, a, a different feel for the community instead of it just always being. The negative and, and brings people down. People said, I don't want to watch our. Facebook, I don't want to get on there because it's just by you, right? And if we can put more positive things that are happening in the community. I think it just makes a difference, so send me those things.
And bird was sound.
Oh, yes, I saw that.
By you.
The what?
Was it?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I know, I saw that. No, he found it.
It's the fight.
I upset her. I gently and calmly captured the bird.
Shocking. A bird whisper.
I, I was just lucky enough that I had some, um, deer netting. For, uh, plants and I just was able to throw it over the top of the bird.
Gotta save it now.
Just, there's so many negative voices and we can flip those out with the happy, positive things.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
I think that would be really good.
He is really helpful.
Well, if Alexis can, you know, keep winning national championships.
That was awesome. You see those posts, I love those.
Yeah, that's very nice.
And there, and I don't know the day thing about dance, but we were impressed.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, uh, she's fun to watch. Yeah, it was really cool.
And she really brings a good spirit. One of the things about that is that she not only represents in our town, but kind of our culture of our area. By being someone of sort of character and, um. There were people from throughout the coun- country who were texting me, who saw that and, and people around our state. Who said, wow. You really have good, good youth thing in Woodland Hills, and I said, we do. And it's nice to be able to highlight those kinds of things and, uh, the mayor and, and then were able to go to her watch party where. They showed that she won, right, and see that on the big screen at a movie theater, a family in a big, that a movie theater. For people who come and watch and, and just really a positive, um. A positive voice of the world and to be able to say, well, I'm Woodland Hills Utah. Was just a, a little icing on the cake. People, people are looking at me going. What, what? You know, texting me, she's from your city? Oh my gosh, you know, and so it's kind of fun.
Yeah, except the news kit is reporting that she was from Highlander or.
Well, they would say she's from Oran because, because, um, the dance studio is in Oran.
That's where she's.
And so that's why, that's why, because I said, how come they keep saying Oran? But it's because that's where the dance studio is located. Their powerhouse for people.
That's the studio.
Mm-hmm. There's probably been ten people who have gone on the national.
Derek Cus, both were out of there. There's, I mean.
Justin High Tower.
You're saying I should sign up, is that what you're saying?
You want to be a dancer, can be shimmy though.
I will pay you to sign up, so I want to.
I'll go make that call, David.
Yeah, I'm listening.
You've never seen that at all.
All right, thanks.
So, so that's, that's good. So anything this Friday or anytime you want something on social media, just send it to me on a text and just say, Carrie, put this on.
Great. Good, thank you. Council member Brad, public works, water and finance.
As, as Ben mentioned, our public works meeting was all about garbage. It was a garbage event meeting. Um, most of my meetings are about garbage. So we didn't really cover water much. I did have a question. Hmm, maybe for Ted, maybe for Corbett, but. Are, do we, have we got an updated bid to finish out West Lofer?
So I just went through, who is it? I hate that, is that you? No, it was Wayne, I think, maybe. Yeah, so I updated the costs, um, seven, two weeks ago. Something like that. I don't know what's an updated bid from a contractor, but going through updated the costs, I mean. To get it, so the price we got before, I just called a contractor and you were having to price it. Get a formal bid, you have to go through the whole bidding process.
Yeah, okay.
It's been updated about three weeks ago.
Okay, so. Then that would be the question of, at what point do we move that out bid so that we can get. Bids back on it.
Yeah, I've got a contractor on the new pricing, it was really interesting.
Okay, so at what point do we do that?
There you go.
Yeah, I think that the funding's there.
So the funding might be there, it depends on the bid.
Yeah, and there's, that's your question. And there's two parts to this because there's also a commitment from the other party. Right, to also commit to their portion of it, fund it. Because doing it all at once.
Which, in all of our conversations with them. They want to do it sooner rather than later because they recognize the costs are just going up. So they, they were like. We would have done this a year ago. So I, I really think it's more on us. To just get this across the finish line.
Yeah, no, I agree. And, and it's something that I, I was planning on bringing out, that we do talk about in our staff meeting. I'm assuming that. That's on me. So I will talk to Corbett about making sure that we advance that, kind of start making progress.
We want to get ready, I think it's, I mean, there's a few things to do to get ready to go, but. Uh, we just, so the drawings that we have for the project. Uh, incrementally high and they were not complete drawings, it's enough so we could get some pricing and some ideas, so. Got to finish up some design and then just get the documents ready and, you know.
Great. Okay.
Thank, thank you.
And thank you.
Anything else?
No.
All right, uh, and then, uh, for me personally. Uh, the only thing I'll say is that, uh, we're trying to, uh, check off items on our to-do list and, uh. We extended our staff meeting by thirty minutes starting tomorrow, so, uh, that should add to them a little bit, but, uh. And so. I, I, I believe that, uh, morale is relatively high, uh, but a great bunch to work with, so. Um, you just keep trying to chip away at a very large list of things to do, so. That's my report. Okay, uh, possible items for upcoming city council agenda is, this is one thing that, uh. We all got the email, the, uh, approval voting in Utah. I. I don't know really much anything about that. I mean, we changed our voting practices just last election. Is this something that we want to. Explore further or we?
It's an interesting system. I don't know if you guys did any research on it or read the, the presentation.
Presentation.
In short, yeah, in short, you just basically get to vote and say, I like this person, I like this person, uh, you know, and then. It goes and tabulates all of the likes, so the person who's liked the most. You know, so like in this last election, what, you know, percentage of.
Right.
Well, it's not necessarily Facebook voting, but like in our last election, the what percentage of the votes did you and I share that rate of choice voting did not. Calculate at all. Right, because I had you second on a lot of my votes and you had me on second on a lot of your votes and. It would take all that into account. So it's just a little different, tabulates different, the results would then potentially be different.
And it probably seems like the implementation, I mean, Jody, you would be able to speak to this better than. Anyone, ranked choice voting, the transition to that, was that, uh, a large burden or was that, uh?
Well, it was no burden on us because we contracted it with the county, the county, however. I was not impressed with the way the county handled it.
Okay.
They did a very. Poor job according to the recorders.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and it was really kind of the first time and they, I think they heard the recorders. That's what I heard, is I heard they said that, that they, they heard the problems and so. The one thing that I had a question was with this, I mean. The state legislature had to approve the option for cities to opt in to rate choice. Have they approved this method? Because. Hearing it, if it, if it's not even one, something that's been approved by the state as an official election choice. It seems like it would be a waste of our time if it's not even a real option.
Well, I also think that year two, even into ranked choice voting, I think that was something there's still a little bit of learning curve.
Mm-hmm.
So for us to shift gears, but. Uh, before I, uh, tell that guy we're not interested, I wanted to pass it off of all you.
I, I think what you could say is exactly what Carrie just said, is just say.
Get approved by the state.
Yeah, you, you gotta work through the state first. You can't approach the cities, this is. We don't get a choice.
Okay.
Yeah, we're a political subdivision.
We, we can't make up how we do our voting. Right, that's, the state has to approve it, then we can adopt it or not. If the state allows us that option, which they did, so ranked choice voting.
Okay. All right. Uh, okay.
And I have just that one that, uh, a visitation, a presentation from, um. The growth in prosperity task forces, it's a county-wide task force that is working, um, um. In different, different aspects of, uh, county growth and how we can. Um, collaborate and work together on some of the issues and there are. Um, they have really done a lot of work on metrics and. And figuring out what people are looking for, what they're not looking for, so they are going to every council meeting in the county, giving a presentation. Prior to their conference on October twenty seventh. Um, and so, um, I have given them the two dates in September to see which one they would like to attend.
Okay, yeah, just keep Jody and me on that. Hey, great, well, it's already very late. Let's take a break and reconvene at nine thirty and, uh, try to. Dial through this next basement. Okay, uh, we'll call the city council meeting to order. Uh, we will, uh, ask council member Malkovich to read some pledge and then. And get it by council member Brad.
Stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for this night that we have to meet together. And we are. Very grateful for this place that we can call home. We're grateful for the residents, for those who are accomplishing great and wonderful things. And we're grateful for all the good works that are taking place here. We pray that God bless us as we. Vote and deliberate on important matters that. We are sensitive to each other and recognize that. We all desire the same thing, which is to have a beautiful city. That we all are proud of. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Okay. Public comments.
The public comment.
Do we have public commentary? Okay, none present? Okay, Jody.
Um, when you're considering the fencing ordinance, I would ask you to, um. Strongly consider adopting it, especially allowing them on the, uh, property lines. We recently had. A issue with a neighbor and their fence. And it cost them over sixty thousand dollars with the sale of their home because their neighbor interfered with it. And they thought that that property was theirs. So on behalf of Matt and Heidi Hanks, who have now moved from our, um, community. I would ask that she strongly consider adopting.
To allow it on the property lines.
To allow it on the rear and side property lines, but as long as it's not a flooding problem.
Thank you. Okay, and nobody online, so, uh, we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. And move on to the consent agenda, item sixteen. Approval of the June twenty twenty-two financials. And a motion to approve. Said financials. Okay, motion by council member Brad, second by council member Malkovich, all in favor.
I, I.
Any opposed? Okay, likewise, June twenty twenty-two financials.
In July.
Oh, excuse me, July.
I have, what if I have questions?
Well, actually, what should work is. You need a motion and then you ask the question.
Motion second, then discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So.
So, uh, I'll take a motion. Did you make one?
No, I didn't. I, I seconded the last one.
Okay. So.
Any other questions?
I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve them.
Okay, a motion by council member Brad.
Second.
Seconded by council member Keniston. Now we have discussion, okay.
Um, first of all, the building permits, it was like there's quite a decrease. Are we worried about that?
We're in a new fiscal year.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we're leading into fall too.
Versus prior year date is what I'm looking at. I understand we're in a new fiscal year, um. It is a different year for sure. I'm just wondering. Um, it's probably going to be quite a bit lower. Is that going to affect our budget?
So a lot of the building permit stuff's in, in and out. So we're working that, but, um, maybe, I, I don't know how many building permit possibilities are being sit on right now that are being reviewed by Corbett and the. Um, engineers, is there a, a count by chance?
Oh, it's a bird, Jody.
Okay, um, there's a, there's about four or five in the works, I'm still waiting, um. For threes, permit fees, um, are ones that we have reviewed and I guess they're trying to decide. They'll move forward with building. Um, but this, the numbers that are coming in have just decreased from last year and I would imagine that.
It's probably going to be a down year overall, right?
We'll continue to see, it'll be a trend like what happened in. Two thousand seven to two thousand ten, where we saw more remodels, sheds. Um, different things like that, memorial senior homes.
And, and I think that's a fair question and it's. It's a good one to consider. Are we relying on those funds for our operations?
That's what I was asking, but if it's a pass through.
And we're really not.
Okay.
I mean, for instance, if we have fewer building permits and we also have fewer inspections, you know, all the things, the money from the permit goes.
Okay, I have another question. Thirty-four twenty-one, fire department services, seventy-one to sixty. Seventy-one thousand already. What is that?
These are the, the three firefighters that are going out to fight fires. And so we're getting reimbursed, so this is covering. A lot of their salaries, overtime, wear and tear on the truck, and there is some. Uh, monies that the city is retaining for future. Fire reduction projects.
That's what I wondered. I wondered if that was the money that they were bringing in.
Yeah, it's doing actually pretty good right now, so it's, uh, it's been a good thing for the city this year and for the firefighters. They seem to be doing well.
And that probably doesn't include the California one that they just went out on, like California really well.
Yeah, we're behind, we're behind about two fires worth of payments, so yeah, you're correct.
Okay. All right, um.
Which, so, sorry to.
No, you're good.
I think it's. What you're raising is a really, really good thing because I, I remember after our fire, when a lot of our firefighters. Worked for the federal government or whatever, you know, they made money elsewhere. It shows up as in their paycheck. So all of a sudden citizens were like, we're paying our firefighters this much? Well, the answer is yeah. But then we get reimbursed. So it's, it's kind of one of those things that when you go onto the state website, that shows the salaries of everyone. Yeah, we, we, we were paying them that much, but they were also working. That much and they were, we were getting reimbursed.
Yeah.
And then so.
Well, because on the fire wages, it shows thirty-two acres. Well, because on the fire wages, it shows thirty-two, eight fifty-four, but I'm assuming that includes the wages for the three, but then it's offset. Right? Yes, no?
Yeah, yes. And this one is also transcending two years, two different budget cycles, but you're correct.
Okay.
Is there a way we could break? I know you love to create new line items, Chris. But is there a way we could create like a a four-two-two, zero point, you know, one, one, zero? That's, you know, fire crew wages.
So you are right on top of it.
Oh, wow.
It's already, it's been created.
Perfect.
On your July ones, go down right between EMT and fire. There's one called fire reduction or fire, fire fuel mitigation. I can't remember what it's called. That's the new line item. It's gonna track it.
So are you gonna extrapolate that thirty-two and put it just to be our normal fire wages and pull those out and put them into? Four-two-two, two-point-one-zero, zero?
Yes, yep.
Perfect, done.
I think that'd be good for the citizens too, for transparency, so they can, if they wanna look at it.
However, the the one warning about that is that, yes, that will show up on our budget. It will not show up on that state website. So the state website will still show their name and then how much they made, because we, that's required. And it's not going to break it out into any of those different categories.
But then it's gonna, I guess, that we're talking about it here, so at least we have the understanding, so we can explain it.
Okay, any further questions or comments?
Um, just the snowplow tools and equipment. Are the plow, like, have you been spending money to get the plows making? Is that what we've been doing there, getting them ready?
Yeah, I need a, that'd be a good question for Corbett there.
I think that amount in the tools and equipment is the third on the skid steer.
Okay.
Third comes out of snowplow, third comes out of water, and a third becomes a roof.
And then I just have one more question and then I promise I'm done. I think I actually already figured it, but um there was a withdrawal of fifty thousand from the savings. But I think it went into the general checking, right?
Yes.
And is that normal for us to transfer that amount?
We transfer hundreds of thousands of dollars um in and out of our state account mainly, which is the house at the city Utah treasurer's office. Um, and you'll see those deposits come into the um checking account under the revenues. So yeah, well, we're bouncing money back. We're trying to get the best bang for our bucks as much as we can. And housing the money at the state, we get to pool our, you know, two or three million dollars with Salt Lake County, who might have three hundred million. And we get the same interest rate, the same benefits that they do, and the money's liquid typically within twenty-four hours. If we get it in by ten AM the next morning or forty-eight hours if we're after ten AM, so it's pretty liquid pretty quick.
Okay, that's awesome. Okay, those are my questions.
Okay, all in favor of approving the July twenty twenty two financials? Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, uh items, Jody, can we do all these minutes in a single? Okay, so city council meeting minutes, June twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, July twelve, twenty twenty-two, and August nine, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by council member Hilliard. I'll second, seconded by council member Kinnison, all in favor? Okay, motion carried. Item twenty-one, release of four seasons, flat C and B bonds.
Um, I'll make a motion and we approve it contingent upon flat C. There was something final that needed to be done to that.
I think there was two things, wasn't it?
And then flat D, we're holding some of the funds.
The bond released before you has taken that into consideration. You're not releasing a hundred percent of the money. You're only releasing what's been completed.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion. So it's as written then, right? There's no specific.
Right. I wanted to make sure, in his explanation of it, that we were making sure those contingencies were.
Yeah, yeah, they they.
Okay.
Okay, so motion by council member Lunt and seconded by council member Hilliard. Let's see, is is that a roll call or is that just a, okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, um item twenty-two, ordinance twenty twenty-two, twenty dash twenty-three, amending ten, eleven, two C. Uh regarding accessory buildings.
So is this us just saying yes, send it through the system to do a public hearing and then have it come back to us for an actual vote?
No, I believe this is going to approve the ordinance as.
It is. The public hearing is already, we're only required to have a public hearing, committee, planning commissioners have that. And just make the recommendation. So this, your vote puts it into place if that's how it is.
Okay, well, I will entertain a motion to uh approve that amendment.
I'll make a motion. The accessory.
Yeah, the uh.
Containers.
Yeah, the containers. Okay, uh motion by council member Hilliard. I'll second the motion. Second by council member Kinnison. Council member Malkovich.
Yes.
Council member Hilliard.
Yes.
Council member Pratt.
Yes.
Council member Kinnison.
Yes.
Council member Lunt.
No.
Okay, motion nevertheless carried. Uh item twenty-three, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four, amending ten, eleven. Eight, B, one, E concerning fences.
A motion.
Motion by council member Malkovich, seconded by council member Kinnison. I'll vote this way, just for kicks. Council member Lunt.
Yes.
Council member Kinnison.
Yes.
Council member Pratt.
No.
Council member Hilliard.
Yes.
Council member Malkovich.
Yes.
Okay, uh the eyes have it, motion carried. Item twenty-four, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five, amending requirement to conduct natural hazard assessment.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by council member Lunt, seconded by council member Pratt.
And and this is, and this is the.
So not everybody has to do it, only people that are in a hazardous area that way. People that don't need one aren't having to.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Um, you know, we found a few areas, but it depends on what the hazardous is. This, it seems to me when we had that last gentleman come in, he said, well, almost everything has a, some hazard, some is a earthquake. Some might be the flooding, you know, but some might be whatever.
Well, I will also point out, this was always the plan.
Right, right.
When we, when we passed the ordinance requiring a natural hazard assessment, we always, what we were waiting for is the state maps. That would then.
Yeah.
Tell us who really needed it, then we were gonna change the ordinance, so it would only be required by that. So to me, this was always the plan.
So our current ordinance says everyone has to.
Yeah.
Which I voted no on to begin with. So now this just makes that worse of it, less of it to me.
Much less, yeah.
Okay.
That's why we jumped to make the motion, because I.
Yeah, it's been said, we're just ready to vote and there's no further discussion. Okay, council member Malkovich.
Yes.
Council member Hilliard.
Yes.
Council member Pratt.
Yes.
Council member Kinnison, abstain, and council member Lunt.
Yes.
Okay, the eyes have it, motion carried.
Well, I'm not gonna say yes or no, because it's both bad answers. For a lot of reasons, I will report whatever.
I thought maybe that conflicted interests.
No, no, I have, I had a speech two years ago on this. I don't wanna go through. He remembered, don't you? I just made it in the rear. To make people pay more.
Okay, item twenty-five, approval of community watch committee charter.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, council member Malkovich.
And I'm going to add, just as we talked earlier, I think that this committee will be the eyes and ears of the community to report to.
Okay, so moved as amended by council member Malkovich, seconded by council member Lunt. And uh.
We don't have it in our pack, because I didn't have it.
Okay, so.
It's a policy and procedure. It's not a resolution or an ordinance.
Okay, so that's.
It's on our policy and procedures manual as as the charter.
Okay, alright, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item twenty-six, uh resolution approving the June twenty twenty-two check disbursements.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, uh motion by council member Lunt, seconded by council member Pratt, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh resolution approving July twenty twenty-two check disbursements.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by council member Hilliard.
I'll second it.
Seconded by council member Pratt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item twenty-eight, resolution approving a change in banking institution. And centers on the account.
I'm thinking we should table that one until we find if there's other al- alternatives. Well, at least what you were talking about before, Janet. You had some concerns with that particular institution.
Well, I just.
Before you do that, go ahead and second.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, so uh motion by council member Kinnison, second by council member.
No, my own, my, my only concern is those little tiny ones like that. They're, it's just the trend. They're, they're getting doubled up by the bigger banks. So it's probably only a matter of time before capital community is also doubled up by a bigger bank.
How's the big just that run up?
Again, yeah, multiple times. A capital community, it, they will, the same thing will happen. It's just a matter of time. I'm just saying, that's the trend of all the smaller banks.
That's been going for twenty years though.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna honestly go through the signing process again.
Yeah.
We we did do this, how many times, twice?
Chris, I'm sure you did some research and didn't pick this one at random.
Now, research, Mountain America Credit Union, American Fork Bank, Bank of Cash Valley is what I think they're called. Trying to stay away from Wells Fargo and Zion's, did not research those. Yeah, uh we did look at Altabank, Altabank, but did hear that there was a change going. I specifically asked um Matt, the president, if they had any. Purchasers or they had any intention of selling. They said no, and I said, yeah, but if somebody came and offered you the money, you guys are probably selling. Uh, you know, just with anything else. So it's a very valid concern what Janet's bringing up. Um, but as of right now, they are gonna keep everything. Local and provide us the service that we're used to.
Alright, well, no further discussion.
Yeah.
We'll probably have to do again.
Nothing in life is guaranteed. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion that's seconded?
Oh, yeah, sorry, seconded, been been. And any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, uh decision uh regarding ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six.
I think we can table this one.
That's tabled.
Was that not needed?
Yeah, is it tabled or is it just a? Okay.
Good, okay.
Alright, that was easy. Okay, uh.
Can I? I would like, and I, but I, I would like to be added to the finance committee if I could. I don't know, you guys can talk about it, but um just with my background in banking is. Uh, you have a year left and it would be nice to have someone that.
And we anticipate you losing.
No, I don't know. But a lot of our other committees were two council people. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, and and fair question. The charter specifically says one council member, not, not two.
It's a policy and procedure, could be amended.
Yeah, so anyway.
I mean, I I would welcome your uh.
I'm I'm not, I'm not gonna be a pain. I just.
Of course, it's a public meeting, so.
Parks and trails is the same way. We don't have it as one and we've got two serving right now to.
I I mean, if you guys are opposed, then, but I'm just saying, I.
I I feel like it's nice to have another person on, because the budget isn't huge.
And some of my committees are great, but I don't, but I'm, I'm not even to use some of my business skills. In the committee, so I'm over, I mean, I'm over Woodland Hills days and, you know, I kinda got the girl in the jobs. Um.
Hey, that was not a sexist decision. I just gave you the time to carry.
No, that's their hypocrisy or standing got canceled yesterday. He was gonna do that.
No, and my jobs are hard and I've given up a lot Saturdays, a lot Saturdays. So I'm just saying. But I I would love the opportunity, you guys can discuss it amongst yourselves, but I just wanted to kind of throw it out there, that I would love to be. Involved on the finance committee.
Okay, well, Jody, can we uh put that on uh upcoming? Hey, you better watch what you ask for.
I know, I'm sorry. I'll be nice, Chris, I promise.
Oh, it's Mike Taylor you gotta watch out for. He's in charge of the committee, so.
Alright, uh, given that it is ten o'clock and there have been no substantial legal updates. Uh, I would propose that we not enter closed session. Uh, and we can, we can discuss those.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn by council Pratt, seconded by council, yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Need adjourned.
Don't leave until you sign.